This is a, uh, this call meeting order. This is a special meeting of the City Council with one agenda item. And it is for a formal decision on the contractual arrangement that we received from the Bay County Sheriff's Office. Uh, a couple of comments before we get started. Uh, I felt like that if we were going to by unanimous vote solicit a proposal from the Sheriff's Office, that we should respond to it with a formal action. I also think that it's important, which is being predicated on that every council member be present so that everyone can be heard, whatever their voice is, if they choose. I think it's important that everyone be. Following up on that, I think it's also extremely important that we, as a council, or presented pertinent information, that we can aid us in making the best decision that we feel is appropriate for the City of Mexico Beach. In doing that, I've asked Annie Castro, she has called in, and she will make a presentation to us. I did this with, at perspiration with Annie. Annie confirmed that she was the most qualified and had the most background. Uh, his recent informant does not give him the background that I thought that we needed in terms of some of the, some of the reasoning behind it in the first place, even soliciting from the Sheriff's Office. Also, I think she can speak to the Sheriff's commitment and some of the early meetings that we had where he was totally committed to community policing and that our community would be given top priority for handpicked officers that would be involved in maintaining what we all think of as a warm, friendly, charming community. That was very important. So, starting out, Annie, can you hear me? Oh, you can't hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, she's going to give us a short presentation based from the view and the eyes of the new administrator, which was, uh, as everyone knows, is over the employees of the city in the day-to-day operations. So, Annie, if you would please, uh, I'll turn the table to you and let you make your presentation.
Okay, thank you Mayor. Uh, I want to start out by saying that we should have a slide before we question to provide that to you, just list the different areas of concern that we looked at, what we considered, and our decision is about the people. You know, all 2,600 plus of our property owners, this is not about the police department. This is not a referendum on the police department, this is about the people and what is in the best interest of the people. Uh, it's about ensuring that we provide the best services at the best possible cost. Um, and I don't have to remind you guys, we lost over 70% of our structures and the associated tax revenue, and we're facing an estimated $250 million in damages or rebuild costs. Uh, you know, we've had to make some tough decisions. You guys know we've eliminated four positions of public works. We've eliminated a position of City Hall, and no doubt this won't be the last of those tough decisions. I'm in your shoes, I know this is a tough decision, uh, but I feel quite giving you the facts, that would help you to make your decision. So, let's take a look at the different areas and what we looked at. Start with citizens' safety. Uh, community policing, community outreach was, from a safety standpoint, we felt that was top, that was the high priority. Uh, while most every police department uses some form of community policing, so does our Mexico Beach Police Department. Uh, the Sheriff's Office has a formal division, it's commanded by Captain Steve Marmo, and he runs this division, and they provide formal programs, educational programs for, for everywhere, from our seniors down to our children, and educate our citizens on how to be safe as possible, how to avoid being a victim of a crime. That's not to say our officers can't do this. And you can see on the slide, you know, I gave a check to the Mexico Beach Police Department because they took this, you know, they know our citizens. But the Sheriff's Department takes that as step one by providing a formal community outreach program. Uh, we don't have to pull the officers off patrol to help educate our citizens. It's, there's a division separate that would be available for our citizens. Uh, one thing that we want to make sure everyone understands, that for patrolling the Bay County Sheriff's Office, they, their uniform patrol deputies respond to calls in their respective zones. So, in the Mexico Beach zone, you will see the same officers, you'll get to know your officers, uh, you'll develop the same personal relationships with your officers. They work in, they work in their respective zones and respond to calls at their time. Uh, and back to the Mayor's comment, uh, before we got started about the Sheriff's Office commitment, in one of our early meetings when we were first looking at it, and we looked at not just the police department, we've looked at fire, we've looked at public works, we've looked at every aspect of our city. Uh, and, uh, when we first met with the Sheriff, one of the things that struck me was, uh, how, uh, how he spoke about Mexico Beach. You know, he grew up in Mexico Beach, uh, and has a special place in his heart, and that was evident in our conversations. Uh, he made, uh, the comment that he wanted to make sure if we did this, he wanted to have personal, uh, responsibility for the deputies that were selected in our community because he wanted to make sure, uh, that we had the right fit between our, you know, for our citizens in our community to the deputies who would be in place. And, and that commitment, I think demonstrated time and time again, especially since the storm. Uh, and those who were on the council at the time of the storm, you know, how, how much we had to depend on the Sheriff's Office. Uh, and they were there, uh, they've had deputies in our city since the storm, you know, and paid them for that, that they've been there, that they've been there to help us. Uh, to this day, they still have deputies. When they have spare deputies, they put them in our community, controlling, uh, in Mexico Beach. Uh, maybe you know that Sheriff worked team earlier, uh, in, before the summer, and he placed Lieutenant Marty Williams in our community, uh, to, uh, look at the help BPIs here on the ground and look at where's going on in our community. Uh, Annie and I met recently with Lieutenant Williams, and, uh, it was certainly evident to me that he knows our community, he knows where we have issues, he knows where our seniors live, he knows, he knows the areas we have to keep an eye on. Uh, he certainly has the knowledge of our community, and he would be heading up, as I understand it, he would be heading up, uh, the Mexico Beach Zone Division if the council so chooses to go and take that route. Uh, and then the, one of the most important things that everyone needs to understand is every single Mexico Beach officer will have the opportunity to apply to the Sheriff's Office. Every single one of them. Uh, and I'm not sure that, that everyone understands that, that they will have that opportunity to apply to the Sheriff's Office. So, if you will get at the community outreach, uh, you know, both the Sheriff's Office and the Mexico Beach Police Department, follow community policing. Uh, but I would say from the citizens and the taxpayers' standpoint, you get a bigger bank for your buck if you should get a totally separate division, uh, to implement programs for our seniors and all of our children. You know, if you look at the second area, ever since the state, it's specialized divisions. With the Bay County Sheriff's Office, you don't just get the deputies, you don't just get your patrolmen. Uh, we have officers who are trained in different areas, but with the Sheriff's Office, in addition to the uniform patrol, the citizens get specialized teams. And I, I think that it would be safe to say, if you were a victim of a crime or you were accused of a crime, you would want the best possible, uh, resources, officers, training to be investigating that crime. With the Sheriff's Office, in addition to patrol, you get squad team K-9, incident response team, the diet team, the bomb squad, an area unit, you get an honor bar for celebration. Uh, they have specialized investigative teams, their criminal investigative teams, their crime team investigators, they have the advocacy teams, they have financial crime team, and, uh, a huge enforcement task force. Uh, and we all know that since the storm, we have had some issues in that area. With the Bay County Sheriff's Office, our citizens, our taxpayers get these additional special teams for the price of patrol units. Uh, and I just want to make sure that you guys understand that, you understand you're not just getting, you're not comparing apples to apples because you're getting oranges and bananas and strawberries and a lot of other things with the patrol price. Uh, the next area is technology. You know, kids now, we can't even compete in that area. Uh, we pretty much lost any technology that we had. Uh, if you look at the Sheriff's Department, they pretty much do everything in their vehicles. Uh, they have, uh, technology, I mean, we just can't compete with the technology, uh, and the leading-edge techniques that Sheriff's Office can provide our citizens, our property owners. In some cases, the Sheriff's Office has some of the most sophisticated equipment available on the market. So, from a technology standpoint, uh, I know we're, we're just looking at, you know, providing the right firewalls for, you know, IT communications. We can't even compare when it comes to technology. Uh, I also looked at length of service, and I'm just, you know, hearing some comments from the citizens, uh, what is, what seems to be important to at least some of our citizens is, uh, knowing that they're going to see the same officers that does, that they get to know their officers, and they want to see those officers there. So, I looked at length of service, I'll start with the leadership. Lieutenant Williams has 29 years of law enforcement. More importantly, where I'm focused is he's had 20 years of Bay County. You know, if he grew up here, he lives just outside the city of Dover Street. Uh, and he's been in a leadership position with, uh, Bay County Sheriff's Office for over 14 years. Um, recently, I needed, we needed a couple of officers to cover traffic for efficient turnout, and initial response I got back from the chief was that he didn't have anybody to recover, and so I quickly made a phone call to Lieutenant Williams, and I was impressed with the fact that he just said, "I don't have an officer, but I can do it, I'll be there." And that's the kind of commitment I've seen from him, just being there, being available, whatever we need, uh, since the Sheriff plays to our community. For our leadership, you know, our length of service in our community is less than five years. Uh, and, uh, I don't think any of our leadership team lives in our community. Uh, and, uh, of course Lieutenant Williams just, lives just outside our community. From a patrol standpoint, uh, traditionally, the Bay County Sheriff's Office has had a very stable workforce of decades, service on average. And if we reach out to them to try to get an exact number, they couldn't give us an exact number because they've seen a lot of change since the storm. Uh, there are always exceptions, but employees leave the Sheriff's Department program for particular reasons, they need to retire, they're no longer meeting standards. Uh, it's, uh, they have, uh, an extremely stable workforce. If you compare that to the City of Mexico Beach, on average, uh, for our patrol, this is what I'm considering our bond leadership position, they've had just over three years, three years of service in our city on average. And this is just, I'm focusing on, uh, service in our community. Uh, because that seems, that seems to be what's important to some of our citizens. Uh, so, uh, you know, we've always had a high turnover rate, and I don't think that's going to change. I mean, the truth is simply we cannot afford to pay officers what they serve, and we can't compete with benefits and pay others around the community. Uh, if you, if you look at what's in the best interest of our citizens, uh, Bay County Sheriff's Office offers our citizens a more stable workforce. That's, that's just a fact. Uh, now, if you look down to financially, one thing that, uh, I know that it's hard to understand, but maybe some of the public don't understand, the annual budget that we presented to the council is bare bones. The reality is that budget does include everything they need or everything they lost in the storm. It's just what we absolutely have to do at this moment. So, you know, God bless Annie, if he can find $36,000 savings without cutting services, eliminating equipment, or moving the financial burden out of the department, I don't know where he'd find it, because, uh, if those who were on the council last year, if you know last year, uh, in the budget, we were to replace two vehicles because we needed vehicles desperately before the storm hit. And we had to bid vehicles budgeted, uh, but the storm hit it before we could get those vehicles ordered in place, and we canceled that order because of, uh, financial concerns. So, we needed two initial vehicles before the storm hit and damaged and poured our vehicles. Uh, the black cars you see on the road today, those are native, uh, to the city right after the storm. They were intended to fill a short-term gap, they were never intended, nor are they roadworthy to contend to be reliable vehicles, uh, on our streets. We need vehicles, and really the only big hit we could pull out of the budget would be vehicles. And if we needed two vehicles last year, and it was desperate, and we were desperate for those vehicles last year, and now we're looking at more damaged vehicles, I, I don't see how you can make the case that we don't need the vehicles. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention, uh, is that, uh, from the 5% increase from the Sheriff's Department, again, here too. Uh, traditionally, the Mexico Beach Police Department, we see raises, we see increases every year. Health insurance goes up, the cost of fuel goes up, the cost of maintenance goes up, you have to give employees, the cost of living adjustments for raises. Uh, you're going to have those, those increases, so with 5%, if you look at what we face with the Mexico Beach Police Department, 5% is a really good deal. Since, like, 2015, 16, uh, just to look at a quick personal look, on average, we see about a 7% increase, uh, every year, just from the police department on their annual budget. It's been as high as 9% or higher. Uh, so, 5%, if you look at that from just the annual budget, what I have to share with you, hands down, the Sheriff's Office's proposal, uh, with their annual increase is a much better deal for the taxpayers. Uh, the other thing I'm going to look at is future obligations. So, you can't just look at our, our current annual budget, you have to look at the next year's budget, and you have to look at the recovery costs that are facing the city currently. Uh, there's an estimated $4 million in damages total between police and fire, and considering that the buildings were comparable, uh, from a value standpoint, considering that, uh, the fire department, you know, the police department lost vehicles and other equipment that the fire department did not, let's just more simplistic, you know, for simplicity, that the estimated damages, just to put it down the middle, said the estimated damages for recovery for the police department is $2 million. I think it's higher than that, but let's just say $2 million. The city is on the hook, and that's, that's just to fully recover our police department, that's to replace the building, equipment, vehicles, everything that we lost in the storm. That's not my estimate, that's the estimate, uh, our consultants have been looking at what we lost. The best-case scenario, the best-case scenario, because we parked already, and we must have replaced everything, and many of our vehicles were old, our building was a modular, uh, a lot of that, they replaced only black kind of what you have before, and, you know, we're looking at new vehicles, we're looking at a new building. But the best-case scenario, the city's going to be on the hook for about $250,000 just for the police department's portion of that recovery. City's on the hook for 12.5% of whatever FEMA determines is eligible. And again, we've seen already, that's not going to be everything. Uh, on the other hand, if you look at the Bay County Sheriff's Office, uh, their $100,000 startup cost, you compare it to 250 to the 100,000, uh, and that in and of itself, you can make the case that this is better for the taxpayers, but most of those costs, uh, for the startup with the Sheriff's Office would be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. Uh, it, it doesn't really matter how you're going to establish your police department, how you're going to, uh, recover those costs on recovery and consider it eligible for FEMA. So, what you're looking at for future obligation for the taxpayers in Mexico Beach, you can compare the 12.5%, which is our match that we have to come up with, on the 200, on the 2 million, which is $250,000, or 12.5% of 100,000. So, it's, it's a choice between 250,000 or, or 12,500. That's the choice, and that's the choice you make for the taxpayers. I can't have a check on those future calls, uh, to the Sheriff's Office because it's, it's a lot easier to budget 12,500 than to budget 250,000. If you looked at liability, maybe you know those, uh, on the council, who sat on the council prior to the storm, you know, last year, the police desperately needed two vehicles, this is before the storm, and we bunched in two vehicles, and then we, after the storm, those vehicles were ordered to live before the storm hit, so we canceled that order because we just did nothing financially for them. So, before the storm, we needed two vehicles. But the damage, uh, I think we had three, we had three vehicles that were pretty much totaled after the storm, and the insurance company so far has only agreed to replace one vehicle. I think one of those vehicles wasn't insured, you know, the other vehicle was all of that, even the insurance recovery is not going to replace that vehicle. Uh, so, uh, we've, uh, let me move past that, I think I lost a place, let me just talk about liability. Uh, before the storm, our liability insurance was hanging by thread. And if you're on the council there, you know that. Uh, and now we're looking at, uh, our insurance policy across the board, we're going to max out every policy that we have, every declaration we have on that policy, we're going to max it out. Uh, so, the biggest liability to the city traditionally has been lawsuits stemming from law enforcement. No matter how well our officers do their job, you still are going to have lawsuits, and that's expensive to the city. Uh, and again, when you have liability insurance that before the storm was hanging by a thread because of the number of lawsuits that our city has seen, uh, over the, uh, last few years, eliminating that liability for the city is a really big deal. And with the Sheriff's Office, that future liability lawsuit is a result of law enforcement, that no longer becomes the responsibility of the city, that becomes the responsibility of the Sheriff's Office. The taxpayers are no longer on the hook for costs associated, uh, with those lawsuits, and the lawsuits are going to continue, they're not going to stop, it's just the nature of this law enforcement. Uh, we have three active lawsuits against the city currently, uh, two are police-related, one is, uh, related, but, uh, without discussing the details of that, you could, you could look at that case and say that if it had been any other department, we probably wouldn't have seen that lawsuit. Uh, so, three active lawsuits. So, future liability, in this, uh, scenario, with the Sheriff's Office proposal, uh, that future liability becomes responsible to the Sheriff's Office. And it's not just the lawsuit itself, uh, but the staff, time, and energy involved from producing records, sitting through depositions, that's an intangible cause that you can't really quantify, but it's enormous. Uh, and I, I was told that today, most of all of our officers are in depositions today for one of those pending lawsuits. Uh, so, it's, it's, it's a financial hit to the taxpayers. So, I, I just looked through quickly each of the items that we looked at, the areas we consider, uh, before we even, uh, suggested that we take a look at the police, at the Sheriff's Office as an alternative. And in every area, you can't harp it with the facts, I mean, the facts are clear that the citizens are focused on a safety and a financial standpoint. They get a bigger bank for their buck, uh, with the, with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, the difficult decision, uh, and I know it's difficult to remove promotions because as I said, I said what you said, uh, but as a, I'm a lead, uh, as a citizen myself and a property owner, I'd ask you to look at the facts, just look at the facts, and I wish you the best on your, your decision. And I, I know I told the Mayor, I've got to run, I have another commitment that I'm willing to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions from the council? Okay, Annie, thank you, thank you for calling in, thank you for agreeing to at least give us pertinent information that, that we feel that we need, uh, and we will talk to you later. Thank you. All right. All right, uh, moving to the table, uh, if there are those of you that have, we can open the floor for discussion from the council. Uh, I think that it's important that we, that we be disident, while we've never really done what you've heard, it was part of the, the backdrop of those preliminary meetings of seeing if it was worthy of, of getting a proposal from the Sheriff's Office. Uh, I think I'll go first, only because I, I have some strong figures around me, make sure it gets recorded. Uh, one of the things for me, and I have been very diligent, and I've demonstrated, I think in, in every turn, by my voice, by my vote, by my conviction, and by my actions, that this is a special place, Mexico Beach, the feelings, the warm, friendly character of this city is number one. I've made that clear many times. And on the subject that we're discussing today, if, if there was a doubt in my mind that we would jeopardize what to me is the most important thing that this city has, I wouldn't be sitting here, I wouldn't have even called this meet, I never would have gone to the Sheriff's Office to start. So, I want this to be clear to those of you here, and for the record, that when you can upgrade
I said, I said what you said, but as a, honestly, as a citizen myself and a property owner, I'd ask you to look at the facts, just look at the facts, and I wish you the best on your decision. And I know I told the mayor I've got to run, I have another commitment, but I'm willing to answer any questions at the council, man.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Danny, thank you, thank you for calling in, thank you for agreeing to at least give us the pertinent information that we feel that we need, and we will talk to you later. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. All right, moving to the table, if there are those of you that have, we can open the floor for discussion from the council. I think that it's important that we, that we be hesitant, while we've never really done what you've heard, it was part of the backdrop of those preliminary meetings, of seeing if it was worthy of getting a proposal from the Sheriff's Office. I think I'll go first, only because I have some strong figures around me, make sure it gets recorded. One of the things for me, and I have been very diligent, and I've demonstrated, I think at every turn, by my voice, by my vote, by my conviction, and by my actions, that this is a special place. Mexico Beach, the feelings, the warm, friendly character of this city is number one. I've made that clear many times. And on the subject that we're discussing today, if there was a doubt in my mind that we would jeopardize what to me is the most important thing that this city has, I wouldn't be sitting here, I wouldn't have even called this meeting, I never would have gone to the Sheriff's Office to strike. So I want this to be clear to those of you here, and for the record, that when you can upgrade what you have, to me, to bring the citizens of this city the best possible service available, is something, whether it be water department, police department, canal, I don't separate them by departments, I separate them by what we can offer the citizens, we as a council can offer the citizens of our city. And it is clear to me that the Bay County Sheriff's Office is an upgrade. If we move forward, this city needs stability, it needs, we need people in place, longevity, we need people to have confidence in the rebuild of our community, and I see this as an absolute win for the city of Mexico Beach. Anyone else?
Well, I think it dipped a lot, talking to a new city administrator, which I'm very proud of him, I have a lot of confidence in him, and talking to the chief, and talking to the citizens. The Mexico Beach place program is part of Mexico Beach. I understand you're filled out, I'm not saying you're a name, but it's important, and I'm concerned, I'm sore for this having that place.
Would you ask me to announce your names for the topic? Because not everybody knows who everybody is.
We don't, you don't know the council members?
Not everybody knows who each council member is.
I'm Bobby Pop, Mexico Beach Council.
Okay, is, remember, this was for anybody that's at the table here to make sure that you have an opportunity.
I'm Rex Buckner, Mexico Beach Council, and, you know, we have 2,700, I think, on. I don't have any, my emotions are not either way here, whatever we decide, I'm gonna support, I think everybody will support. A lot of work we're into trying to figure out what is the best way to go, and I agree, if you have an opportunity to get better, have better things, that is why I look at that, and if that's the way we need to go, then we go that way. But the things that were presented here, to me, with the opportunity of everybody, all the police officers having the opportunity to be void, and I'm sure that Chief Ford would put some of them back in this community, I don't think we would lose everybody on this force, that they have an opportunity to still be here.
Jerry Wallace, I'm in the second term, maybe my last one. I think as a council member, my position is to look at the best opportunity and the best thing to do for the citizens and the city of Mexico Beach. Sometimes I've changed my mind by investigating some situations over the years. Sometimes it's necessary not to be able to explain all the reasons that I have, because it's, it's just, it just can't be done. I find that I'm thinking just like the mayor, which I don't think like the mayor a lot, but I think so this time, because we're going to the highest accredited sheriff's department in the state. There's others that's accredited, it's high, and the city police department here has no accreditation as far as the state's concerned. Now, I don't know how important that is to everybody, I think the sheriff's department can offer us so many different situations. If we're short of somebody over here for some reason, they have the people they can send over to fill in. If, you know, someone has to take a situation to court, like our guys have to do, then they'll fill some, they'll fit somebody over here to fill in, to maintain our two people I talked with Sheriff Ford today, as a matter of fact, and I asked him if he would consider hiring some of our sheriff, some of our police department, and he said he would be happy and plans on interviewing each and every one of them that wants to come to him. The, I don't know, I've thought about this for actually six or eight months, we've talked about this long for the storm thing. I have no problems with our personnel, they've always been good to me, and I think good for the people here. I also think that Marty Williams, with the sheriff's department, that's been here ever since the storm, just in a brief conversation with him, man, has he absorbed information, and it's quite impressive. Anyway, I know I haven't talked with many people that are for this change, very many at all, and it's going against the grain of nearly everybody that's sitting in this room, but I doubt that many of you in this room know as much about what's been going on in the last year or so, because so much of it is not been made public. And...
That's it. I don't care. Is it the bandanas or what?
Yeah. I don't guess my fault, but you're...
Just, listen, if Mr. Wallace has the right to have this time, agree, disagree, don't like, but we won't just interrupt because you don't like something somebody says, okay? Continue, please.
I think the city will be better off going with the sheriff's department, without a doubt, period.
You're listening, I'm laughing, I got a lot, I'm not gonna break down, I can get back. I don't even know, I, I hear it, I'm jaded, why are we here? Why are we here? Because last Tuesday, when we left, I can't put what I asked then, what, what needed said, it's that we threw, it was over, it was what you said, and what I said, what Bob said. And then we get a meeting, after Tuesday, Thursday, I get a letter saying we have a special meeting. And I asked myself, why are we here? I thought we done been over it, but I learned through the politics, whatever, city council, how, how did he do this? How did Mr. Castro do it? And I think we're, and I got, I kind of, I learned a lot this week, I learned a lot. And when I found out how he did it, it called me in both, when he wouldn't hear. It would've been different, and my word, it would've been different, what he said, what I said, it would've been different, because we didn't vote, that's why we here. All right. The number two thing that I got very close, I really didn't like, not the new mayor, uh, Ms. Castro calling in with Andy. I know Ms. Castro knows a lot more property about Mexico Beach than Andy. I don't think that was right, I think that was up. I believe this man has got, we, we as a group now, we should go forward, and what we done quit, done left, we should leave them alone and let's go forward with what we got. All right. The last thing, it's the citizens. I'm here to represent y'all. We have somebody, oh, let's just be quiet, we can just get to it, whatever else, y'all can do, y'all. I'm here for y'all, y'all mean everyone. And it's like Mr. Wallace said, what the majority of y'all here want, and everybody's called him, I think is what he said, didn't want it, but yet he's gonna vote for it. And I can't do that. If I'm handing you, I vote the key.
Yes.
And I believe Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy, and I do see a man, and I do see a church, can go forward and make it just as good as it was. And the old saying I said the last time, I'm gonna say it one more time, a bird in the hand, if broo, two in the bush. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Unfortunately, as I did last Tuesday, about when information comes from this table, that it is considered to be the way we operate. Ask Jerry a question about why we had this meeting, I did that when we started, but I will say it again, charter makes clear that the mayor has, or three of you can get together and call a special meeting. That, that, it's not because of this one. That, that's not, charter makes clear about how special meetings can be called. I said at the beginning that I wanted to ensure that, one, we had pertinent information as any of us chose to listen to. If you didn't wanna hear it, that was fine. Also, I thought it was important that every council member had it said. So I want it clear for the record about the purpose of the meeting, which I thought I did at the beginning, I want to say it again, because it has nothing to do with whether we voted or didn't vote. So, I also, because of the call in, I cleared that with the current administrator. I didn't, I, Al Castro, Mayor of City of Mexico Beach, didn't step out and do that without his knowledge. He supported the phone call because of the background knowledge that the former administrator had. So I want to make sure that we, when we leave here, that the record is clear about the procedure of the meeting and the phone call. I didn't do that for any other reason than for this city council to say that they had received what is considered pertinent factual information, period. Now, with that said, Andy, do you have any comments?
I don't have this time, I think the council is pretty clear, I think I set it down before the correctional paper, but I'm gonna do that in the block.
All right, thanks, I'll just make sure if you have a comment.
We, we remain our police department, I can fix it if we go to the sheriff's department, I like Marty more than the council.
It is traditional that we allow those of you here, if you have, you spoke, many of you, or some of you spoke at the last meeting, I don't think it's appropriate to simply corral the council. Those of you that are here, want to add or speak directly to the subjects that we're here for, please just stand at your seat and address the council.
Mayor and council, I guess my question, oh, Jim, my question would be, this seems to be a hot topic. We have a city council on the mayor's election on May 20th, 2020, I mean, why couldn't this be tabled until that election, where the citizens would all get a chance to vote one way or the other? Because it's all gonna affect every one of us, and that would be my question.
For me, I don't fully understand any benefit of it, but it's, we have a proposal, it's a, I think we as a council, city council, are capable of making that decision. Yes, sir?
I'll just, Ms. Coleman, I live 210th Avenue, I think, following what Jim said here, I think we just heard Ms. Castro's agenda, we can call it briefing, but it wasn't briefing. That was just information that is thrown out there with no supporting data that I saw in the handout that we've been given. So what Jim is saying, I think this is probably a political hot button, nobody wouldn't be here on a Tuesday afternoon finding out about it last night. We're here...
I see Rex, sir. Meeting was posted Thursday at noon.
I know, we, I heard about it last night, so I'm here today, and I think most of us are here for the same reason, is that we support what we have here. And this is not something that I think, we've already seen, you follow Ms. Castro's agenda, a political disaster for her, showed that in the last election. So I think going forward here, I would like to know what the plan our current administrator has, and our current police chief, and our current elected council members, including yourself, as well as we have two that are upcoming for election. I'd like to know, and that's it to me, what come along with what Jim said. There's no urgency in this right now, I think Bay County is willing to throw us a light if we need it the next six months. I don't think they're gonna abandon us over here to our, just our little measly points. I think our guys are doing a fine job, and I think we should continue on that track and let it be an election item, and anybody wanting to run for election or rerun for reelection will have to respond to the citizens, either at the poll or choosing if they want to run.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Ray May, Mexico Beach, what is the big hurry? I think, oh, I've been here for a year, I think I've worked for six elections. It's just not, it's too big damn hurry to mess it up.
I certainly don't think that they're, that we better, remember, we all voted to go get the proposal. It's not like this is untapped behind the back, I don't, I don't quite understand the... Right, back in the back with questions?
We're thinking about building a $6 million budget, I don't feel comfortable doing that without having our police department here. I've been here before when you head Bay County, I could never get service when I needed it, and so I really don't think that's a good fact, we want our police department, we need it.
Okay, okay.
Hi, I'm Julie Kennedy, I'd like to say, you know, I asked about this at the city council meeting months ago, about our police department, because where on the streets was, there was talk about it, they take them about Bay County. I came to the council meeting like I did every single week, so I would have the facts and not the rumors that we were hearing on the streets. And I was told at that time, after I was tasked by some of these rumors on the streets, that no, that was not true, and that our police department was safe. Then we hear about it on the streets again, that it's going on. We find about it on the internet, and we see something from a news channel, because I still don't have local TV where I live at, okay? So I see the news channel broadcast showing how you guys have done this, you know, I think it was Channel 7 or 13, and they're the ones who I got the information from. I'm here today to get facts, but all I hear is Tony Castro. Now, we're talking about what's the hurry? Now, we're talking about what's the hurry? Well, the fact is, we voted Tanya Castro out. We don't want her in here, and you're sitting here presenting her facts, but they're not facts. They're her opinions, with no facts to go behind them. She could have easily printed something up if you guys wanted to present us facts so we understand this, instead of just somebody's opinion, but you can twist anything any which way. It could have been printed up and given out where we could actually see some facts and some comparisons. I'd like to hear from Chief Kelly. I would like to hear from Andy. I would like to hear, what are our other options? If we stay with Mexico Beach Police Department, how can we get those vehicles in the future? Can we go, um, and get grants for those vehicles? How, we talk to the other places, and are there donations from other places that we can get police cars from? Is there other things we can do to help our police department? Because us citizens are willing to do it. We are all willing to step up, to do the labor, to do the paperwork, and to help out. We have been since the beginning. But I cannot appreciate being told no, months ago, everybody else, and then coming back, and now this is a slap in our face.
I can't, I can't personally speak to that. I, I don't know what, what you heard from.
Well, you should be able to speak to it, because it was you the one that told me that. And it's on, it's on your video, so you put it back.
If it is, if it is, if it is making out of context, we have known for months that we are waiting for a proposal from the chair. So I've never said, and I will stand by this unless in the context of whatever the question was, but your accusatory remarks concerning Tanya Castro, this table, this table, this city council gave that lady a lot of respect because of things that she did during her time. So you can, listen, please, you can come here and attack someone, that's, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna do that. What she gave are facts that were looked, looked up and presented to us. And everyone, you can, you know, those of you sitting there and shake your hands and say, no, that's not the case. Those of us that have been entrusted to run this city have more in-depth knowledge of, of what we have been talked about many times concerning whether we should solicit a report or not. But for her personally, she did an excellent job. Whether or not you or others think of her because she spoke today is non-factual. I'm not, I'm not gonna try to convince you differently. I would have asked her to do that if I didn't think we needed it. So. Now, we're through, we're, you and I was gonna debate that.
We're gonna have to debate. I wanna let you know where I'm coming from though.
I'm with Castro.
No, you don't. I have gone up to Ms. Castro and said, thank you for what she's done for us. I haven't heard anything. You don't realize that. She has done some very good things here.
Uh, the debate here, it ain't Tanya Castro.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know.
Let's eliminate that. All right, yes, sir.
Uh, Darryl Key, 46th Georgia Avenue. Uh, Ms. Castro listed some things, um, same to me, and, and what you just said, uh, Al. I agree with that. I mean, we don't know the things that you guys do know. But what we do know is, is that we heard things that was not contested at all, and, you know, I think some of the things she listed as, as assets protecting the sheriff's department, I think those are things that we get anyhow. And if we don't get those, we'd like to know that, because if, if we don't get those, then that might change our opinion. But, but, uh, she said it's not about the police, it's about the community. Well, this community is in favor of the police department. Now, and, and Jerry, I like Jerry Ross a lot, you and I are friends. But when he said, all the people he talked to were in favor of the police department, but, he said, but, based on what we know, I'm gonna vote the other way. I think that's what he was saying, but.
Right, what I meant, yeah.
And that's what he meant. You know, you know, to me, that's, that's pretty wrong, because you're, you're voted on to represent the people, and, and then you don't represent the people, and you have your personal opinion, override what the people say to you. I think that's wrong. Now, I'm not mad at you, Jerry, and I'm, you know, I'm gonna speak to you, and, and when I see you on the street, you can shake your hand, and we're gonna like each other. I'm not, but, uh, you know, all of these things that she listed, uh, the outreach available, don't we have the outreach available anyhow? I mean, if, if we have an issue, we can call them, they come down here, they support us. I'd like to hear from, uh, Chief Kelly and ask, don't, don't we get those things, Chief Kelly?
We do. It's under a mutual aid agreement, and that's why I hear the ICA, uh, city manager.
So all of those things that she said, uh, you know, the SWAT, the K-9, the task force, any kind of assistance, we get those things because first of all, we're in Bay County, and we have, we have the agreement that you just listed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what she, what she told us, for the difference being that we're gonna get such a better police department, we already have those things. All we gotta do is ask for those things, and we get them.
Say that again, what did you just say?
I said, we already have those things.
If we ask for them.
Sir?
If we ask for them.
Sure, if we ask for it.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I, I didn't see anything that she said that was gonna be a benefit. And from what I understand, my talking with Chief Kelly and Andy, the money difference, the, the budget that she created, and I'm not trying to bash Tanya, but I'm just saying, the budget that she created, based on the information that I've been given from people sitting there at that table, was inflated, and it was inflated in a biased way against Mexico Beach Police and for the Sheriff's Department. And we, we know that there was an issue prior with police and Ms. Castro. So all I'm saying is, is that people here really want the police department, and, and, and the fact of the matter is, if we keep our police department, then we haven't lost anything, because we could always call them later and say, come on down. If we do disband them, and they're gone, and we figure out later that we got somebody that we don't like, and is not doing what we want it to do, then we're up in the creek without paddle. So I think that we should give Andy and the chief a ton to work together, see if the budget that they can put together. You know, there were some insurance issues that were not done right. I mean, I don't know why those cars weren't insured when they should have been insured. There were a couple of things that shouldn't have happened, and then insurance, I understand, take care of those cars. That's, I just wanted to add those.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mary Z, 3024. In your defense and that of the council, I want to say that I think you exercised due diligence in presenting an option to us, to the community, to either keep the city police department or vote for the sheriff. And I think that's to our benefit to have that option and to choose from it. But I'm not sure the choice is being given to us. And secondly, all of the officers that are on our police force now, I think they would believe that having a job is a lot more important than having the opportunity to apply for a job.
Absolutely.
If we go to Bay County Sheriff's Office, the city will still have to come up with approximately eight hundred thousand dollars per year to pay the Bay County Sheriff's Office, if we're not. So how are we saving, if we still have to come up with money? How does that, how does that translate into savings to the city if we still have to provide that for taxpayer dollars?
Well, there was really an insignificant amount, thirty-six thousand, not, thirty-six thousand dollars, and immediate savings, but we, as you heard us talk about, there are future savings that would also come into, but you're just talking about a snapshot in time. And so, like, this year, it was a thirty-six thousand dollars.
But going forward, there will, there will be savings.
There would be, there, there would be other savings that we could, you know, work off of if we had to. All right, is there anyone else?
Dick, right block zone. I've got a question from Chief Kelly. Our go-to backup seems to be closer to Gulf, to Gulf Police Department. If there was a bad problem, wouldn't they be a lot closer mileage in time?
They do. We also have a mutual aid, but they've already established it.
Um, so that's, that's something we have right now.
Yes, sir. Everything is already established by the mutual aids and has been for years. It's definitely here. If we need some additional support, personnel, equipment, it's already inside the agreement.
Yes?
Jeanne R, Fifth Street. Al, would you be more specific as to what the savings would be down the road? Possibly?
Well, the budget shows for this year, even with the startup cost, which is one time hundred thousand dollars, that the immediate savings are thirty, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars. So that's just from his being, I mean, from, from his, that he would.
He says there would be downsides?
Yeah, well, you know, we're talking about liability savings down the road. We wouldn't have any exposure there. We would have more, we would have officers that are, when, when they're gone, that we would have a, a much larger workforce to draw from. And, you know, for me, I think that, you know, I think so. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Heather Gaspay, Quarter Avenue. So I just wanna make sure I understand this. And from last week, when we decided we were keeping our police department, that we all left, obviously, it's all here, so this week, we're kind of squabbling over thirty-six thousand dollars?
I'm not, I'm not.
No, we didn't decide situation last week.
Well, I'm just saying, we have our tax base here, we have popular opinion, we have all the citizens that are obviously love our police department, that are here to support them. I'm with a lot of people here. I don't know what the hurry is to make this decision right now. I think we could give them our backs so we all can feel comfortable. Many of us, I don't know where the pushing was posted, maybe on the front door, but a lot of us don't live here full-time. So if I couldn't find anything on Facebook or on the city site, maybe we could just, you know, go hard for the door, go to the door.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, Joe, welcome to O'Neal, Virginia. Um, part of my job, I work for the federal government, I do anti-careers. Uh, what I didn't hear in any of those conversations is, would the Sheriff's Department still be able to meet minimum response times to various incidents? So that's why I, I'm, I'm cautioning, because it sounds like they bring a capability that we don't have or we haven't here, but as the chief said, if the other government is, what, this way. Uh, we, we have mutual aid agreements.
Right.
Uh, that are already in place, and even if a sheriff's deputy was here, he needs SWAT or any kind of investigation, those are still coming from, oh, wait a minute, the same place that we would be coming from. So I don't, but I don't see is the increase in capability that this, uh, that this plan brings. What I do see is a decrease in our capability, uh, here over here, to control our future. You know, uh, working with any government, government, uh, entity, sorry, I'm a little nervous, I'm just trying to, uh, any government entity, power given up is never power brought back. I've never seen any level of government relinquish something to a higher level, and then say, oops, can I have that back? It's, it's a dogfight trying to get it back. And so that's, that's kind of my, 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 my thing, is I, I didn't see where this, where this, gives us any added capability. And if I were briefing this to my commander, I don't see the two proposals side by side. So as a citizen, I, I, I'm unsure. Uh, I got a lot of faith and trust in y'all, that's why I voted for y'all. But I, but as a citizen, I'm unsure what the two proposals are. I don't understand the lymphats in each, and I think it would be really helpful to see both of them side by side. And then bottom line, what does one versus the other give us in terms of true, on the ground, boots-on-the-ground capability in an incident? Because my, my opinion is, just, we didn't say, yeah, the sheriff can give us people. Flip side, sheriff is, is short of people in other areas, and we're fat, guess what? Plucking them, and he's putting them where he needs them. We give up that control of our own patrol. That's, that's, that's my two cents from a capabilities standpoint.
Next.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but, you know, me. I, I live by myself, and I feel so safe here. You know, I've never had anything to problem with, or anything like that. And I love our police department, and I see them controlling back everywhere. I live on Maryland. Uh, and I, I feel, you know, I'm waiting, I'm gonna go buy, and that makes me feel good, because, because they're here. And it's important. Can we keep Mexico Beach as much as we have before? When we start defining up, getting rid of, that's what I'm feeling. We're gonna lose all of it, Al. You've been here for a long time. You know what I'm talking about. I don't want the Sheriff's Department here. I don't want different people coming here all the time. I, I see a crack in our community. And by taking Jim out of here, and we have this big hole that's gonna allow somebody, we're gonna go with someone that's gonna give us so much more, which I don't think they are, but might be sad, some of you. Well, then, I think it's time we bring in the holiday in, because they could certainly give us more, and give us a big dining room and everything. If we start doing those things, ours won't have time. Please don't get rid of them. They're our Mayberry people.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, George?
Uh, my name's George Gill. I live at 124th Street, and, um, sort of in the way of full disclosure, we let Ms. Castro speak for twenty-seven minutes. And, uh, it's known on record that Ms. Castro has a personal vendetta against our police department.
George, we're not here to discuss name of Castro. I wanna be clear. We're, we're through with that.
She had her say, that's what I do.
I, I, let me tell you, let's make clear. We're not here to discuss her. We're here to discuss the topic of the proposal for the gov, let's make that clear.
Man, I'm about to.
Okay, well then, let's just, let's, let's leave that out.
Okay? I've also been doing a lot of study on Robert's rules, and you guys need to pick that back up, sir. Okay? I understand that members of the public can ask for point of order, but somebody up there should have, when we allowed her to spend twenty-seven minutes talking about doing away with the police department that she's on record as saying she does not like. Okay, how many minutes do I get up front to speak? I don't know if anybody else.
Well, you know, traditionally, if we were, as the little saying, hourglass, you get three minutes. But, uh, we try to, try to be as, with you, I have to be as liberal as possible from past experience, so I'll try to do that. If you can hold it for three minutes, that'd be great.
Well, I can't, and, and I sent every council member what I refer to as talking points. And I can read them, and it's gonna take about fifteen minutes so that the public.
But we're not gonna, we're not, you don't have to.
All right, all right. Robert's rules. I can ask any one of these speakers to relinquish their time. Three minutes of their time. Why not?
No, you cannot.
Why?
I'm the chairman. I, I, the rules and the charter and the Robert's rules order are sent by the chair. I understand Robert's rules order, number one.
Okay.
So you're allowed less than three minutes now, because you're making way too big a deal out of something. Just state your, state your position. You don't have fifteen minutes. You will be called out of order and removed.
Yes.
Okay. I'll show a council member hands as to how many read my talking points that I emailed to you. Okay, so you know, you, you know what's going on. Any citizen that wants to, I'll give them, I'll give them pop, because they're factual, it's a broad brush handout that we received. I saw no facts or figures in there. My talking points address almost every one of those issues, mostly factual figures. Since it makes sense, I'm limited, I'm gonna reiterate, we have got two, and if you include Gulf County, we've got three law enforcement agencies, entities, that protect and serve our community right now, and have for as long as I can remember, and, and pretty much own property here. What the proposal is asking us to do is to reduce that.
What the proposal is asking us to do is to reduce that, to take one of those entities away, maybe both of them. I don't think the sheriff's office is going to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the Gulf County Sheriff's Office. They may support each other, I'm not sure. Right now, we've got Gulf County, as our chief of police has said. We're in Bay County. We, you know, people forget that. We have got every available resource, resource that Bay County Sheriff's Office has available to us right now. We're not going to get SWAT team units, boots-on-the-ground down here stationed. We're not going to get K-9 units. We're not going to get device, or narcotics, or identity fraud units down here. We have access to them if we need them. But we've got trained officers, as small as the department is, we've got years and years and years of specialty training in these officers. We've, we've got traffic homicide officers represented too. It's seventeen years of trooper experience with one of our officers. We've got county deputy experience down here with our officers. We've got, we've got underwater rescue skills down here. We've got everything we need. And in addition, we have the sheriff's office to fall back on. This is a no-brainer, folks. You don't get rid of a combination of services because you're trying to better, better it. It just, it just doesn't add up. If you, if you want to read some facts and figures, then I, I spent a lot of time researching. My name is George Gill, and I'd be more than happy to pass them out to you. Not today, I didn't write enough copies. But get in touch with us. You folks know, know, so.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Beth in Oldham, over on 15th Street. My question is about response time. That I, I can see where that came up compared to having our police department here and totally depending on the county. Do you have that answer?
You have, you have police officers here?
Yeah. So response time, it's going to take quite a bit longer to get somebody here.
There'll be two officers here every day.
Well, they don't.
Every day, all night?
Well, you don't have, you don't have any, I mean, the response time is the response time. In our location, we can't change that.
Well, we have somebody during the time. That's what I did not understand. So here's the answer. Every day, we're going to have two people here at all time.
And you'll be in their cars all the time, because you're not going to have an office here to make it one bill.
Okay, but as, as you said, they can pull them at any time. If they've got something going on somewhere else, they're, they're out of here.
Now, they're more likely to pull people in when we need them.
More likely.
I would say.
About that.
We, we go here.
No, no, you go ahead and finish, and then I'll.
Well, my thing is, we have so many workers here. A meth out guy was, was arrested in front of my house this last week. I want, I want protection yet. I don't want that, don't want that.
Well, we certainly would take that.
You can't hear what the county's going to do. I mean, they, what, what our sheriff's office is going to do. No, you keep it.
Okay, I, I, I'm very confident that you get, very confident, so. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I have to answer the question about the manning of response time. Our current response time is four to three minutes. Bay County Sheriff's Office manages to be one per shift, with a total of six people, all capable. And that's the current plan that I was told that we were looking at. Six people does not equal two per shift. Eight people equals two per shift. Six is not. So when our current response time is one to three minutes.
And the troubles all the time.
Okay, so you, just a minute. I want, I want to get the people that haven't spoken, okay? Barry.
At the end?
We'll see. I'll check Roberts rule board.
Thank you.
Diane Kenny, two-two-three, Kimbo. I think what I'm hearing is people just aren't really convinced yet that that is. I think you're looking for pros and cons. I'd like to give Andy an opportunity to find some savings. I don't know, he's new to the position. Get some more input from Chief Kelly. And kind of sort it all out, put pros and cons together for us. It would make more sense. She made some good points. She did, that I didn't know about. But that, can we dispute that with our current police chief?
I'm sure we can. Okay. Anyone else? We need to wrap, wrap this up. You've spoken now, you, we're not going to, this won't be a carousel. So what is your, what is your?
Are you asking this?
I'm asking you, before you start, what, is there, do you have a new question?
No, I have a motion to put before the council to consider. And to delay this vote for a specific, on a time, I don't know, six months. I would like the council to decide now to delay it before they have to take a vote. So I have to put that.
Yes, ma'am. You got a question? We're, we're. Oh, okay. All right, we're going to, we're going to close it then to the public. Everyone has had ample opportunities to, to, we've heard that. Yeah, okay, go ahead. Yeah, if you got, we're going to bring back the table.
I don't know that this bugs any difference to anybody here. When you're asking why, making the decision to make it, I still think it's the best of all of them. Now, I moved up here from Clearwater. I had a hundred and forty-six employees. I had five and a half million dollar budget. The FCI offered me a job. I'm not a total idiot. I may look that way sometimes. And I may say things that are kind of stupid. But with all this in mind, that's the reason I'm going the way I'm going. It's not, I'm not personally attacking any of the police department. I just think this, in the long term, would be the best way to go. Now, the point made.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I have to, I sometimes make a note for apartment trust, so don't trust me. So then, now I'm off the train, folks. That's not good. So, so you just have to trust with, you know, you don't know me from now on, most of you, Tom. And, and, but I sincerely think, and I voted for some things that I thought was better for the city than I didn't particularly think was good at the time. And, but this is a particular time, and, and I talked to the sheriff this morning. And I know a lot of you say, oh, I'm only, but he does plan to interview any, any and everybody that's on our police department now. Now, the other thing I'm saying, when I'm sitting up here at the council, and I'd like to see this many people at all, for me, that would get a decent place to have a meeting. But I'm saying, because most of you don't know me, I feel like I'm doing, I'm making the best decision for the community. And I knew I was going to catch hell from everybody, everybody. And so I think some of the people, I had one person tell, only one person tell me, they were afraid to say anything because they were afraid, they were, be afraid the police would do something to them. Well, that's wrong. Don't pull the crowd here. Well, I, I'm just saying it's wrong. It's wrong. So all I'm saying is, I think I am making the best effort to do the best job for the city. Jerry thinks he's got to listen to everybody in here, and that's fine. That's, that's the way he believes. He's probably going to get re-elected next time, so no problem.
Okay, all right, Dave. What's the point with waiting? Because I'm sure you're out of order. Now, we're going to, we're going to bring this, we will, we close the public, we're back to the table, we're through with the public.
No, we're not.
Yeah. We can make this as difficult as y'all want to make it. I have, I have sat here and given every, I have made this available to everybody.
I, I need to know something.
Just a moment, ma'am, just a moment. Contrary to how some of you, I don't blame you if you come from anybody. I'm probably one of the most liberal chairs that there is, okay? And I, and by this copy is debatable, we will maintain a sense of order, and we will do it respectfully. Now, that would be y'all's choice. It won't be this favor's choice. It'll be y'all's. Now, I have closed the meeting to the public. I asked three times, no one stood up, so we're through, ma'am. We're through, okay? We're through.
This is not, what I need to know is, why do you have to vote today?
Because.
Today, right now. Why do you have to do that now?
We're through. Thank you. You just, your comment, I appreciate it. You're, you're good.
I'm glad you didn't get it in.
We're back to the table. Here's what's going on, Jim, or whoever, do we have more order with, are you, who's, who's in charge? Who's our sergeant on?
The captain.
Yeah, okay. I just want to clarify where you are and your responsibilities. Okay. Now, all we're going to do is discuss at the table. If there's any further comment, the chair will entertain a motion or further discussion.
I make a motion. If I may, real quick, before we go into our. All right. Some of the facts that were put out are totally incorrect. The lawsuits, it's indicated that against the department. The one that is, was actually in court yesterday with a discussion of dismissal. That was unfair. The other two lawsuits have nothing to do with the police department at all. Another comment that was made in reference to a detail that an officer was asked to work. I was instructed by the city manager that if we needed assistance, because we only had six officers, and my budget indicated that we had eight, but the city manager took one of the officers and made that person go to the force and left it known that if we needed the support, that that person would be available. I still have the emails and the text messages indicating that she was unwilling to assist us. So I immediately wrote back to Ms. Castro, saying that I personally will work that detail along with the captain. All right. Third thing that was made mention, that the vehicle, right? Had the insurance been correctly covered, we would not have a car sitting out in the back lot that was not insured that my officers were driving around with no proper tags, no insurance. Another vehicle was never even registered correctly with the city. That's the F-250 that the captain was driving. So if those were taken care of, then that would be the three vehicles. Another comment that was made in regard to personnel per shift. We would have eight working officers, had one not been augmented to go to the force. And Ms. Medina, right now, obviously, just had her baby, so she can be excluded. But I do have eight officers established on the budget. That would be two officers per shift. So that obviously needs to be placed on the table, so the truth is there. There was ten thousand dollars added to my budget for a utility cost. We don't have a station. We're moving into the city hall. So we were adding ten thousand dollars for that right off the bat. We were also charged three thousand dollars for a coffee machine. We don't have a station.
We've been through the budget, Paul. We've had budget meetings that have caused meetings. This doesn't seem to be necessary to rehash a budget that we have worked on for three months.
Yes, sir. And I totally agree with all that.
Okay.
I just like, I would like your facts to be put out there. The comments that she had made are totally untrue.
Okay. And that's so, so right. Okay, back to the table. Either discussion or comments or a motion.
I just did. I make a motion. I have confidence in the chief and Andy in trying to straighten this out. I make the motion that we give them six months to refresh all this, how our police department has done. If at that time, it don't work, then we have to. So I make a motion we give them six months.
One second. Anyone have a motion second? Any further discussion? Did you repeat the motion, please? I made a motion. I'm talking about the court.
Motion to give a period. Motion to give a period of six months to Andy and the chief to correct the police department.
Okay, call the road police.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Cathy?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Mr. Pudd?
No.
All right, we will have, the, the purpose of the meeting was to address the contract of the Bay County Sheriff's Office. That was the intent of us getting here. Is there any, is there any other motion?
Make the motion to accept the contract with Bay County Sheriff's Office.
Does it have a motion on the floor?
Just for record, the proposal, I'll be bringing, we'll be bringing back the contract.
Yeah, yeah, proposal.
Proposal, proposal of the Bay County Sheriff's. Accept, sir.
We have a motion in a second to accept the proposal. Any further comments from the table? Call the road police.
Mr. Pollak?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Hell, no.
Mr. Cathy?
Hell, yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Pudd?
Yes.
That's right. Motion carries three to, we will. Andy, if you're going to press, take a lap, take a lap.
Oh, no, free bill, I'm telling you that.
Yeah, now, I'll get to it also. They started having to break with the sheriff's attorney. Come up with a better software.